This meeting of April 8, 2013, of the Dubuque Community School Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please. Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Byteen? Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Donahue? Mr. Kruger?
Present.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Strilo?
Here.
Okay, for the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Eisenhower Elementary with Principal Andy Ferguson to start us off with that.
Thank you. I have students here from Eisenhower School, and they are part of our leadership group. And one of the things that they do throughout the year is schedule school spirit events and also service projects. Three service projects each year, and they're going to lead us in the pledge. Jade, do you want to come up and introduce yourself?
Jade Imbeshin, 4th grade.
Kane McWilliams, 4th grade.
Lauren Gerquist, 5th grade.
Brooke Healy, 4th grade.
Adam Curtis, 5th grade.
Marin Wenders, 5th grade.
Zachary Jameson, 5th grade.
Please, Dan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Thank you.
Good job. Way to go. Yeah, baby. I love that we do that. You guys started off. Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is submitted.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting on March 4th and the regular meeting on March 11th, 2013, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting on March 4th and the regular meeting on March 11th, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. All right, Board salutes. Well, yeah.
Close.
Yep, Board salutes. Do we have any Board salutes that anybody? We've been on spring break, so everybody's got to get back in the mode of what's happening.
Well, I just, I have one. I want to thank Stacy for a nice job of yesterday's paper with our Tom Kirchner. And everybody doesn't know what Tom does. He does go out on community, look for those kids that don't have a diploma, high school diploma, and helps them achieve that. And I'll tell you what, the man is unbelievable. And he's just really bonds with the kids, and his success is showing in our district. So I want to thank Tom, and have a Board salute for him as well.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? George? No? All right, let's move on to, we have a lot of public hearings to get through, so we'll go ahead and just go ahead and get started with those.
Do you need the motion?
I do, please.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of the legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, and Mr. Kelleher, you're going to present this.
Good evening, Board members, and Superintendent Ryan Gans. Each year, the Business Department formulates this book that's called the Certified Budget Proposal. It lists the components of the aid and levy document which lists or proceeds to give you the taxable levy rate for the next school year, which will be for '13, '14. This book gives you a good breakdown of what makes up that levy, how the spending authority is calculated, and what our unspent balance is. I'm just going to go through a few of the pages, not the whole book. You can do that at home, at your leisure. It will be on our website tomorrow morning, once the levy rate has been approved. I'm going to go and take you to page seven of the document. Here, I wanted to bring to your attention the instructional support levy. On that page is a graph showing, the blue is the levy rate that was promised back six years ago when we asked the public to increase the instructional support levy rate from 5% to 10%. And during that campaign, we promised that the taxpayers, we would not raise the levy rate higher than the current rate, which was $16.88 at that time. As you can tell, the purple column is what the levy rate actually turned out to be. So throughout the four years, the year we promised, and then the next three years, we did not raise the rate higher than the level set in '08, '09. Last year, we actually lowered the rate by $1.40. And this year, you can see even another decrease, which you'll be asked to approve later, of another 70 cents. So we're happy to announce that we honored that promise to the taxpayers. We did not increase the levy rate at all, and actually decreased it during that five years. So something to celebrate. The next page I want to bring your attention to is page eight. Here, we list what the UEN per pupil balances are for cash, unspent balance, and unassigned fund balance, as well as solvency ratio. You can tell by these numbers, we've listed Dubuque at the top to make comparisons to the other, and in several of, the rest of the UENs, and in several of those categories, we are at the top or near the top of each of those. So we are currently, as of 2012, the year end, sitting in excellent financial shape. Let's flip to page 10. That has a three-year history, as you see, of the components of the levy rate, to come down to the total. You see, the total on the bottom, an 11, 12, was $16.88 roughly. Then the $1.40, we lowered it to $15.40. And for this year, we're asking you to approve a $14.69 levy rate. You can see the makeup, there's the general fund, the management fund, and the Pebble Fund make up that total levy rate. Also down below on that page, I wanted to bring to your attention the cash reserve. Over the past couple of years, we've reported our cash balance at the end of each fiscal year, and it has steadily increased. We hope to get to a level that was three months of our expenditures. Well, we were able to achieve that goal with the cash reserve levy rate. Now, you see, for this year, we're not going to have any cash reserve levy rate, so there won't be that increase to the levy that we had in past years. We've attained the level of cash that we feel comfortable with. The next page I want to bring your attention to is page 11. And I ask if you have any questions throughout that, please stop and interject with those. Here, we also, every year, do a comparison of our levy rate to last year's levy rates for the other UENs. Now, you can see, we are at the bottom currently of those eight school districts. In the past, we'd been always near the middle of that group, but now with the cash reserve decline and our levy rate decline, we've actually moved to the bottom. Now, this is, again, is comparing it to last year's. So some of these schools may be also lowering their rate as well. Don't know that until they approve it, but that was the information we had at the time. And then the final page of this document I want to bring your attention to is, we compare last year's rate to this year's rate for the Dubuque taxpayer. This comparison comes from the city budget. They use this in their annual budget each year, where they compare the average property value of a house from one year to the next, and factor in the rollbacks, and then their levy rates. So we use that information to do the similar thing. You can see, there was no equalization order over the past year, but there was an increase right here in the rollback. And what that means is, because there's an increase in the rollback, more of your valuation became, or more of your evaluations became subject to tax. So that went up a little bit. So you look and see the taxable values increased slightly because of that rollback. Now, we factor in the school rate, and you can see the decline in rate. Even with that increase in rollback, we are still having a decline in the amount of actual tax dollars that school, for the school portion of the levy. So that is good news as well. How that affects commercial and industrial property. They do not have the rollbacks, or they had the rollbacks, but they were stayed at 1.0 for commercial property. So you can see a substantial decrease there compared to what the residential property decreased for our, the average property is at $357,000, and you can see they're going to pay $254 less in actual property tax dollars for the school.
Real money.
Correct.
Real money out of their pocket.
Industrial, it's even a bigger percentage because the valuation of the average property is higher. But again, it's a nice chunk of change that they don't have to pay that they had to in the past. And again, I want to make sure you understand, this is just the school levy portion of the tax rate. There's also all those other municipalities and, you know, your Dubuques rate and the county rate and all that when you get your tax bill, but the school portion has gone down.
I believe you're just showing off.
We've got to take the good news when we can, Pat. That's all I have from this document. Did anyone have any questions?
This is, just a comment. I think it's absolutely admirable that we are making sure that we're doing what we can to be as careful with taxpayer dollars as we are. And that's, that's great. It's just, even if it's a couple bucks lower, it just sends such a message that, that we know how to hold the line on spending. We don't want a cheap school district. We've proven that. Our building projects aren't done on the cheap. But certainly, in a time of economic difficulty, we are not piling on. It's so easy for governmental entities who want to wind up with a shortfall to just pass that on to the citizen and suck money out of the economy at exactly the wrong time. So I just, I think it's terrific that you're doing the job you have, and you've accumulated a three-month cash reserve throughout this process, too. So.
And you have to keep in mind, too, that levy rate decreases offset, or helped because of the valuations in Dubuque have gone up. You know, other places, they don't go up, like, I believe, West Des Moines and Des Moines area, they didn't go up this past year, so they can't drop the levy rate like we can. We have the fortunate economy that our valuations have gone up. It was about a 3.5, 3.25 percent increase over the past year.
Kevin, my comments, and other Board members, and public at large, I guess my comments will be a couple. One is, over the last two years, our levy rate for the school district portion of the property tax has decreased by about 15%. The school district property taxes make up about 55% of the total property tax bill, with the city at maybe 25, the county at 20, and some various other pieces at 5. One of the main factors, I mean, some of the things we've done at the school district have helped to help lower that rate, but I think the biggest factor has been the economic vibrancy of the property tax base in the Dubuque Community School District, which generally is the property tax base of the city of Dubuque, which has risen over the last several years, and has been kind of a growing, a lot of things that went on 10 years ago are starting to come to fruition with TIF districts that are going off TIF, that we've had an increase in the property tax base. So a lot of that is because of the increased property tax base and the economic vibrancies our local community has helped keep that, us keep that rate low. The second point I'd like to make is, there was a time when I went on the school board in 2006, when we were borrowing money in August, September, to get to the point where we got our September property tax revenues. There was a time when Governor Culver, we had that 10% reduction.
Reduction.
Where they swiped some of our cash, and we were looking at borrowing money then. There were some pretty dire straits, and from that, from being in that point where we had virtually no cash, to the point where now our, our cash reserves are, is a, is a big change from where we were, and we're much healthier on a financial basis now than we were five years ago as a school district. So it's something that I guess the whole community can be very proud of, and certainly the Board is very happy that we're at the place we are right now with our financial situation.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Need a motion to go into public hearing?
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow for public comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we, if there's anybody like to comment? Now's your chance on this issue.
I move the Board of Education close the public hearing or return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2013, 2014 as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2013, 2014 as published. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to be Kevin Kelleher's agent.
Any other discomments or?
I guess Otto and I were at some of those meetings when there were some very difficult budget discussion issues three or four years ago, when there were cuts, and, I mean, some of that relates to the cuts. And while we have cash, our ability to spend the cash is limited by what goes on in Des Moines, and we're still really looking forward to getting some sort of resolution of the allowable growth, so that the state will allow us to spend some of the resources we have to continue to find education we provide in the Dubuque Community School District. So that's something we're really looking forward to now, is that ability to spend. And while there's good news today, there was, three or four years ago, Otto and I were at some of those meetings, and it was a little different. So it's good to remember that times were always as rosy as they are right now.
Well, it might be, it's good news today, but we still need the legislatures to make their decision. That our budget has to be certified on the 15th, by the 15th, and they're supposed to...
Will it be done by the 15th?
Will we certify our budget by the 15th?
We have to.
Why isn't the state certified their budget by the time they're supposed to certify their budget?
That's the, that's the big question. So if anybody can have any contact with any of our legislatures out there, we need them to know that this has to get done. So all those in favor of adopting the budget estimate for 2013, 2014 as published, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Next one. Okay.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof, notice of public hearing on Hempstead High School renovation project and authorized payment of legal notice publication costs to Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Hempstead High School renovation project and authorized payment for the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Motion carries.
Can I have Kevin come on up here?
Do we have?
Oh, sorry. Yep.
We open it up, but let's have Kevin come on up here.
Want to review the project? Okay.
Please.
We need to have, who's going to come up? Kevin?
Kevin, why don't you come on up here, Kevin?
Sorry.
And I'd like to mention that, that we, since I've been on the, I've been the chairman of this Hempstead renovation committee, we, we met about a year ago, and this has been an ongoing thing for, where we met about every, every couple of weeks for a long time. So anyways, this has been an ongoing project for, for a lot of us. And so coming here tonight and discussing some of this is pretty exciting for those who have been on the, on that committee. So Kevin, go ahead and...
Give you an overview of the scope, or?
The overall, if you could.
Okay, I can do that. The scope includes replacing the auditorium with a new state-of-the-art auditorium facility, and all the associated kind of back-of-house spaces with lighting and rigging and dressing rooms and restrooms, as well as all the music department spaces, from choir to orchestra, library storage, instrument storage. There was a real shortage there. Also, an auxiliary gymnasium, and two new locker rooms for athletics, and then renovations of the athletic locker rooms, wrestling room spaces, many of the classrooms that are in the east and north portion of the building. And then a new addition on the east, that'll provide a new main entrance, a controlled entrance to provide security and a little more safety, some expanded parking in some areas, and a little less parking in others. And it'll be the conversion of almost the entire building over to geothermal heating and cooling system, as well as fire sprinkler, and a lot more safety. So it touches almost every part of the remaining part of the building, of course, except for the kitchen, the cafeteria, and swimming pool. We are doing some work in the swimming pool, though. So that's the overview.
And I think it's important to note, too, that, because I've received quite a few comments during this process over the last years, well, how come don't we just, why didn't we build a new high school out of all this? And you were part of that, the original project, and we spent, what was it, 20, is it 23 million? Does that sound right?
I think it's around 16 to 20.
Yeah, it was in the teens, the first four phases combined.
Okay, so let's say 20, and then we're looking at the additional 30 here. So for, for 50 million, we're looking at a pretty, basically a new high school that would cost in today's dollars twice that, about 109 million, that's what it came out to be.
Yes.
So we were very vigilant as far as what, what we were going to do with Hempstead. We had a brainstorming session that lasted for months and months, as far as what we, what we all want. And then we kind of took it from there and just kind of eliminated some things that were, were wants instead of the needs. And this is what we came, came up with, and I'm very proud of the committee and where we, where we directed our attention to. So, and thank you, Kevin, for all the hard work, too, and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow for public comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Anybody like to make comments on this project? Now's the time. All right.
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Hempstead High School renovation project. Whereas on the 11th day of February 2013, plans, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total costs were initially filed with the Secretary for the construction of certain public improvements described in general as the Hempstead High School renovation project. And whereas a notice of hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for said public improvements was published as required by law, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education at the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the said plans, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total cost for the Hempstead High School renovation project are hereby approved and adopted as the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost for said public improvement as described in the preamble of this resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specifications, form and contract, and estimated total cost of the Hempstead High School renovation project as read. All those in favors, is there any discussion with any of that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The resolution passes, and we'll have the reporting of the bids.
Good afternoon, Board members. Always happy to talk about our construction projects going on in the district. On March 21st, we received three bids from three contractors. The first contractor was Kramer Brothers, who submitted a base bid amount of $31,777,000. The second one, Larson Construction Company, reported a base bid of $30,600,000. And Conlon Construction reported, or submitted a base bid of $30,349,000, the apparent low bidder. Having said that, Buildings and Grounds would like to add three alternates to improve classroom duck noise associated with the heating systems in three locations and add $9,000 to that number. We'd also like to accept number six, which would replace, would omit replacing the existing precast concrete panels on the west side of Hempstead there where automotive and the shop's arlot. That would be a deduct of $15,000. So with the $15,000 credit and a $9,000 add, the net gain, the net deduct would be $6,000 off of the apparent low price, bringing the new construction amount to $30,343,000. With a 3% contingency, that would bring our new construction total cost to $31,253,290. Before going on, can I answer any questions or anything for anyone?
Do you have questions?
Your packet should include a letter from FEH recommending the contract be awarded to Conlon Construction, and in the last paragraph, they're recommending a 6% contingency fee, and we would like to change that to 3%.
Bill, jump in on that. We talked at length today, this project is slightly over what was projected, and so we looked at that 6% versus 3%. Had conversation with, with the architects to see if that was in line with what historically we have needed, and I feel pretty comfortable that 3% should, should suffice with what our needs will be with this building.
And having said that, Buildings and Grounds would support the letter of recommendation from FEH also to award the contract to Conlon Construction. May I answer any questions?
We would have the option, since it was over, to rebid, but on a relatively small percentage based on the size of the project, as Otto laid out, extensive work has been put into needs versus wants. So without making substantial changes, reductions in what we would be doing, it would be difficult for us to assume we would see any change in those bid prices. And knowing that that's been pretty well vetted by the stakeholders, that this is what we need versus some of the wants, it would be hard to go back and pull back some things that we think is, are the things that we think are vital for the education of our students.
President, I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract, be it resolved by the Board of Education, Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the following bid for the Hempstead High School renovation project described in the plans and specifications heretofore adopted by this Board is accepted, the same being the lowest responsive responsible bid received for such work as follows. Contractor Conlon Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, amount of base bid, would that be $30,343,000 now, or 49, whatever you want? Section 2, that the President and Secretary are hereby directed to execute a contract with the contractor, such a contract not to be binding on the district until approved by this Board.
It's got, we got to know exactly which number.
What number am I, are we wanting to have?
Is it the 31?
$343.
343.
The alternates.
Okay, 343.
$30,343. All right.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract as read to Conlon Construction for the base bid amount of $30,343,000. Is, what? Was there any discussion?
I guess my, I would like to say something at this point, that Hempstead project has been a project, or a building that's been in need of a lot of work for a long time. It's, as I've traveled around northeast Iowa, the other similar 4A schools, this building is, it's shown its worth, and it is in, it's probably at the lower tier of, of those high school facilities. And in order to make a... And in order to make, have a great community, we need great high schools. And by moving forward with this project attempt, this should bring this building up to be one of the, move it from the bottom tier of high school facilities to, as far as a physical plant, to one of the, to an upper tier facility. So it's, I'm very excited that we finally are at a time when we can afford and we can move forward and we can complete this project. So I'm looking very forward to getting this project underway and fully support the recommendation of the district.
Termites have eaten through the original walls. There's dry rot in the A Wing, and the auditorium is collapsing. At some point, I think we should probably fix the place up.
I think it was bad when we were there.
It was awful when we were there. A hunk of the pegboard missing from the carpet was all ratty.
We knew Otto scored the first touchdown in the history of Hempstead.
Yes, he did.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries to Conlon Construction. Yes, thank you. Congratulations.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Second.
Wait a second. We've got other stuff to do.
Did I jump one? Did I miss one?
We've got summer projects, and it's a special tab. It's a big, long one here. You've got a special piece of paper that was put on your.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I rescind my motion. I withdraw my motion.
This one?
You guys are fast. I know there's a basketball game tonight, but let's get through this. I don't know who's playing. Otto just told me there was a game.
Do we want Anderson Design and Consulting?
Yeah, let's start with Anderson Design and Consulting. We'll start with, are you going to talk about that, Bill? All right.
Everyone, I'll just give you a quick overview of the summer projects. The warehouse asphalt drive replacement project, that's going to be replacement of the entire existing asphalt drive along the northeast and south sides of the administration warehouse. Be regrading, new base stone, some new concrete curb and gutter, new stormwater piping inlet and outlet, and of course, a new asphalt surface. The next project is Marshall Elementary School, the North Wall Tuck Pointing. And I'm asking to defer our recommendation for about a month. We came into some information today that I'm not so sure the contractors qualified to proceed with that, and I'd like a couple weeks to investigate that before coming back to you. The next project would be the Senior High restroom renovations. That's removal and replacement of all existing toilets, fixtures, partitions, lightings, floor finishing, wall finishing, entry doors, toilet accessories for two men's and two women's restrooms.
That's all? That's all we're doing?
No, we've got a couple other things coming your way. Now, those are located on first and third floor, above and below the business office. That's where the women's are, and if you go east, that's where the men's are. And then we have the Senior High roof and insulation replacement project. As remove the existing roofing and insulation two areas. Install a new R42 insulation with new single ply roofing, new roof drains, and two new roof patches. And those locations are at the Nora Gym entry and then the area above the auditorium. We did the small gym last summer. Now we're moving westward to complete that project. And this will finally replace all the ballast roof at Senior. The ballast roof is the rock. If you've ever been on a roof and seen all the rock pebbles, we're finally going to be away from that. It's very difficult to find leaks when you have a roof design like that. And that is a recap of the summer projects. May I answer any questions?
Anybody have questions for Bill on the summer projects?
I move that the Board of Education.
Thanks, Bill.
Receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the summer projects, authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the summer projects and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open public hearing to allow for public comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Anybody have any comments?
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the summer projects. Whereas on the 11th day of February 2013, plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total costs were initially filed with the Secretary for the construction of certain public improvements described in general as the summer projects. And whereas a notice of hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for said public improvements was published as required by law, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the said plans, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total cost for the summer projects are hereby approved and adopted as the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost for said public improvement as described in the preamble of this resolution.
I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specification, form, and contract, and estimate total cost of the summer projects as read. All those in favors? Is there any discussion, first of all?
Bill's got, is this?
Well, Bill already kind of went through it all, right? And the bids are.
Come on next.
You do need to report the bids? All right, come on. Well, let's vote on this. Let me get through this first. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated total cost of summer projects. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Now we will have the report of bids.
I'll start off with the warehouse drive project. The bids were received on March 21st, 2013. With an estimated construction cost of $195,000 for the project, we received bids from five contractors. Ports and Construction, base bid of $297,500. McDermott Escavating, $213,212. McLean Escavating, $253,500. And McCullough Escavating, $220,863. And Drew Cook &amp; Son, $207,000. Keep in mind, this asphalt's 37 years old and was put in during the mid-1970s. Buildings and Grounds would also recommend that we pick up the alternate to connect the downspouts at the central kitchen warehouse print center, get those underground and take away an icing problem that we have every winter on the parking lot. That would bring the project up to $210,500. I also wanted to report that Drew Cook &amp; Son did not check that they had received Addendum Number Two. Advertisement for bids published on February 14th advises that the Board of Education reserves the right to waive informalities and irregularities, and that's what I see us having. Because Mr. Cook indicated and confirmed he does have the landscaping required in Addendum Number Two, although he did not report receiving it. His work is included, and there's no material difference between him and the next contractor. So there's no material differences, there's no advantage. Mr. Cook is going to provide what the specifications call for. Therefore, Buildings and Grounds would recommend entering into contract with him. Marshall Elementary School, as I said before, I'd like to defer that until next facilities meeting. The Senior High, high school restroom renovations with an estimated construction cost of $160,000. Three bids were received for Icon Construction, $178,000. Clower Construction, $198,417. And Ports and Construction, $158,022. And we would recommend entering into agreement with Ports and Construction. The roof insulation replacement project at Senior High School, estimated construction cost of $160,000. Three bids were received. Geezy Roofing, $197,875. Geisler Brothers, $198,400. And Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing, $164,547. And we were not surprised that was higher than 160 planned because we added two roof patches after the estimate from Anderson Design was received. We expected to see an additional cost of $8,000. So we're happy to see it just $4,000 over budget. So while it's over budget, we would recommend entering into agreement with them also. May I answer any questions on those?
Yeah, Bill, I have one question about the denim with warehouse. And I know I've checked with, I know the city, when they do their biddings and everything, they more or less kind of, if somebody doesn't have that denim in there, they don't open the bid. Have we checked our attorney on that? Or, I mean, I know you read something there that's at our discretion, but I mean, I just kind of want to get our.
Yes, we have. I'm not in the impression that it's an automatic disqualifier. He is including the landscaping and everything in Addendum Two. He doesn't have email, he didn't get it. He has the landscaping price in there from Nauma Nursery, so we know that work is included in it. He's not getting any competitive edge over the next lowest contractor. And it's fair here. Materials are all in his contract, and we just saw it as an informality that he didn't report that he had Addendum Two. So based on conversations with our attorneys, I'm recommending that we enter into the agreement. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the following bid for the summer projects described in the plans, specifications, heretofore adopted by the Board is accepted, the same being the lowest responsive responsible bid received for such work as follows. Forum Warehouse Asphalt Drive Replacement, Contractor Drew Cook &amp; Sons, excavating of Dubuque, Iowa, amount of bid, $207,000. Senior High School Restroom Renovation, Contractor Ports and Construction Incorporated of Dubuque, Iowa, amount of bid, $158,022. Senior High School Roof and Insulation Replacement, Contractor Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing, Inc. of Dubuque, Iowa, amount of bid, $164,547. Section Two, that the President and Secretary are hereby directed to execute a contract with the contractor, such contract not to be binding on the district until approved by this board.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract as read for the Forum Warehouse Asphalt Drive Replacement to Drew Cook &amp; Sons, excavating of Dubuque, Iowa. I had that, I read, did you say 210, $210,500 with the change?
Correct.
Okay, not as you read at 205, 207. $210,500. The Senior High School Restroom Renovation to Ports and Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, to $158,022. And Senior High School Roof and Insulation Replacement to Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing, Incorporated of Dubuque, Iowa, for $164,547. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
And now we have arrived at the much anticipated open forum segment of the agenda. I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Anybody wishing to address the school board?
I think that kid in the back wanted to earlier, but he fell asleep.
I move that the.
Everybody's looking weird.
I move that he's asleep, you can't see him. I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of.
No, go ahead, I've just got to find my spot.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there anyone wanting to pull anything out? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Okay, make sure you look at your sheet, make sure we start with page. Let's see, we're going on to facilities and support services, and Mr. Byteen is not here.
I am, Mr. Byteen wanted me to go ahead.
Are you going to go ahead and do it? So, okay, I would say, mine was out of order, so make sure you start with. Well, go to one first. It's just put in there differently.
Oh, there.
So just make sure you read.
Okay. Support services.
All right, you want to go ahead and start with revenue bonds?
Approximately $10 million, school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2013. First of all, make a motion that the, I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution fixing the date of sale of approximately $10 million, school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2013, approving electronic bidding procedures and approving the official statement. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution fixing the date of sale of approximately $10 million, school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2013, approving electronic bidding procedures and approving the official statement. We are going to need a roll call on this vote. Ms. Lucas?
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Krueger?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Strelow?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Second is I would like to move that the Board of Education approve the facility rental fee schedule for the 2013-2014 school year. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the facility rental fee schedule for this 2013-2014 school year. Is there any discussion?
Some understanding these fees remain pretty much the same except for the book fee, which goes up $5. Is that correct, Stan?
Correct. Yep, everything's the same on the book fee.
Any other discussion questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2013-2014 school year. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2013-2014 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2013-2014 school year. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2013-2014 school year. Is there any discussion?
I believe what, did that go up?
Yeah, I think it did.
15 cents, correct? Okay. Kevin, would you please?
We are asking for a 15-cent increase to both the lunch and the breakfast program, cost of meals. We would be required by federal law to increase it five to 10 cents anyway to meet the new federal guidelines. It says the cost of a full lunch has to come to a certain dollar amount based on what the free and reduced amount rate is anyway. But there's also been some substantial decreases in proprietary fund profit over the last couple of years, so that's why we're asking for higher than the five to 10 cents, and we're going up to 15 cents this year due to additional costs mainly because of the fruits and vegetable requirements handed down by the federal mandates.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number Eight to Ports and Construction, Inc. on the Dahlzell Field renovation and Hempstead Field Improvements Project in the amount of $21,019. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number Eight to Ports and Construction, Inc. on the Dahlzell Field renovation and. Eight to Ports &amp; Construction, Inc. on the Dalzell Field renovation and Hempstead Field improvement projects in the amount of $21,019. Is there any discussion? Question? You want to...
Would you like to dress, would you like to dress that real quick?
Go over what those changes are?
I know there's something, there was a deduction and a couple additions. I'm just trying to...
Hello, folks. Change Order Eight is a summary of a number of mostly minor additions, some reductions in the plan. The significant reduction, we had carried a $40,000 landscaping allowance. The actual bids for that work came in less than that by $4,500, which is a good thing. However, we found that the nature of the soil, the topsoil at Dalzell Field and Senior Campus is really unsuitable. I mean, Bill used much of the dirt that we stripped off the football field for filling in areas on Clark Drive adjacent to the transportation facility, but they weren't really the kind of materials. It was sand mixed in with topsoil. And so the one real significant add in this change order is to import black dirt. That is quality material that will sustain the plants that we're, that we've included in the landscaping. That in itself was $12,000, and then there are a number of essentially minor items, with the exception of one in the press box, there's some real sophisticated electronic equipment for running the scoreboard and the sound systems. And we found that we needed to add an air conditioning system for that one room in the scorer's room, and that was $4,600. So the total of all the items, there are about eight or 10 of them, is $21,000.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Before we go on from, and we're still on the Dalzell Field, I would like, I'd ask Bill if he would come up and give us an update. I've had a lot of people ask me where we are with that. I know that the first event, are we going to have Kevin? Okay, or Ken? Okay, we're going to, the first event is next Tuesday, which is the Hempstead Senior Soccer Game. And everybody keeps asking me, because my daughter's a soccer player, are we really going to play? What's this, what's going to be happening there? They're so excited, so I thought we would, could you give us an update as to where we are, what's not going to be there, what's done, and so forth?
You bet I will. I don't know if anybody noticed, but the winter this year was kind of really crummy. And Ports and, early in the project, December, January, had sort of anticipated that we were going to run into some real issues. There's a lot of concrete to pour out there. And there's still a fair amount of concrete to pour on the east side and the parking lot and getting to the team buildings. However, the bleachers are done, the west ticket entry is done, the approach to the school alongside the school up the big ramp, that's ready to go. So the facility will be open, in fact, it's being used as we speak. There is access to the track, access to the field. Soccer balls are making their way down to Grandview Avenue. People are running on the track, it's kind of good to see people walking on the track. And so Friday, April 12th, this coming Friday, is the substantial completion date for Dalzell. And we're going to attain that, and the city will come in and issue a certificate of occupancy. The facility will be usable. The first event, as Tammy says, is a week from tomorrow, and there's a fair amount of work going on, but as always, there's a lot of stuff that's going to happen right at the end, the scoreboard, the sound system, all of that will happen between now and then. And it's really shaping up. There will be access to the field, there will be access for spectators, and there's really three ways to the facility right now, from the west, also from the school side, from inside the school, and the elevator also is going to be done. Inspection is tomorrow, I want to say. And then the visitor's side is, will be open as well. So Ports and's been working hand in hand with Dale Plessel and Amy to make sure that access can be gained to the facility, that it can be used just like people want to use it. And I don't know if anybody's seen the press box lately, but it is special looking, it really is beautiful. So it's quite a facility, and we know people are really excited about getting there, and we're committed to getting them there for the first soccer match on the 16th.
So these are the questions that I had from even the player. Will the scoreboard hopefully be running?
Up and running.
Up and running? But I don't think this game, usually this game is held at UD because it's under the lights, and I don't think we're doing that because I think it's earlier, but...
I'm not sure the lights are in and operable, I'm just not sure they've been tuned quite right yet, but that's also on the agenda for...
And concession stand?
Concession stand got the city inspection today, so it's also up and running.
Supposed to be up and running. These are the questions people keep asking me, so I thought I'm coming out and asking.
What time's the game size? Do you know?
I don't even know what time the game is, and my daughter's playing.
Well, I think there are four games, aren't there four games that day?
Well, two of them are over at Hempstead.
JV games are at Hempstead.
But it's, men's are playing, and then the women, Hempstead Senior.
Sounds like a job for our communications director.
This is next...
Next Tuesday. So that's, and then the following day is a big track meet.
And there is a, just a full docket, so now, do you expect 4,000 spectators at the soccer match?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Tammy's kid is good.
I don't know, boy, the pressure's on. But I, they're very excited.
Very excited.
The teams are very excited to actually compete on those fields, so...
And Charlie and I just walked the field today, and it really is special.
It is.
It's going to be a fun venue.
They really enjoy practicing soccer on it, and I know the track kids are enjoying it, so it's, it's a great thing to see come to.
And to Ports and's testament, they really have worked hand in hand with Dale and Amy to make sure that there is a program in place, even with some areas that are still under construction, primarily just concrete paving out on the east side, but they really are working hard to make sure that that's up and running and people can get where they want to go.
I hope that a lot of people come, we should be prepared.
Well, we don't, we're not really, this is kind of what they consider a soft open, and, you know, we'll keep continuing to...
I want to go.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty sure there's going to be a lot of people.
Do we know about when those four games are, what time of day?
Oh, I could look really fast.
If we can have somebody check during the meeting, we can report.
You can get the information out, that'd be great.
Yeah.
So we'll know by the end of the meeting.
Okay.
But, and, but we are going to have an official grand opening in the fall.
Right.
So just so people are aware, it's going to be up and running and keep opening, you know, more and more as the construction gets finished, but not the official grand opening until the fall season.
The soft opening.
Yeah, this is the soft opening, as we call it. So, great, thank you so much. I know they're excited.
I was also asked, what about the, the people, the community, as far as using the track for walking and stuff? Is that, are there hours on that, or, I mean, what, where are we at on that?
I don't know.
I don't think anything's changed officially.
Has it over where we were a year ago? Not that I'm aware of where it was before we redid, before it was redone.
So even though there's construction going on over there, they can come like early morning?
I see. I don't know that it's fully open to the public yet.
Okay.
I'm not sure who the right one to speak to that would be, but there's a little ways to go, and it's still a construction zone.
I just want to make sure that liability, because, you know, we don't want to, okay, okay.
The girls' game is at 6:15. I'm not sure what time the boys' game is, so at least I, I know the girls' game.
Good.
Okay, let's move on.
I'd like to move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds, be resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, that the construction contract and bonds executed and insurance coverage for the Kennedy School Edition remodel project, as described in detail in the plans and specifications here, herefore, approved, and which have been signed by the contractor B, and the same are hereby approved, and the Vice President is authorized to execute said contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, Ports &amp; Construction, Inc. of Dubuque, Iowa. Date of contract, March 12th, 2013. Bond surety, United Fire and Casualty Company, $5,741,800. Date of bond, March 12th, 2013.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Edu... Oh, is there more?
No, need a second.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
All right. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds as read to contractor, Ports &amp; Construction, Inc. of Dubuque, Iowa. Date of contract, March 12th, 2013. Bond surety, United Fire and Casualty Company, for $5,741,000, $41,800. Date of bond, March 12th, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds, be resolved by the Dubuque of Education and the Dubuque Community School District, that the construction contract and bonds executed and insurance coverage for the Jones Campus Elevator Edition Project, as described in detail in the plans and specifications heretofore approved, and which have been signed by the contractor B, and the same are hereby approved, and the Vice President is authorized to execute and contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, Epic Construction of Dubuque, Iowa. Date of contract, April 8th, 2013. Bond surety, Granite RE, Inc., $286,623. Date of bond, April 8th, 2013.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds as read to contractor, Epic Construction of Dubuque, Iowa. Date of contract, April 8th, 2013. Bond surety, Granite RE, Inc., for $286,623. Date of bond, April 8th, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Anderson Design and Consulting, Inc. for the senior high school small gym floor replacement project in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Anderson Design and Consulting, Inc. for the senior high school small gym floor replacement project for the amount of $5,000. Is there any discussion? I think we're all happy to see this one get done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the senior high school small gym floor replacement project, and set the date, time, and location as May 13th, 2013, at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the senior high school small gym floor replacement project, and set the date, time, and location as May 3rd, 2013, at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for the hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Kelleher will present the quarterly budget report.
Well, Kevin, coming up here, I thought, I spotted something interesting on the agenda. We've just awarded about $37 million worth of contracts, and every single one of them went to a Dubuque company.
That's very good for the Dubuque economy.
That's great.
Good evening, Board members again. I have two things that I want to bring your attention to in the budget. If you look on Tab Eight, page 140, for the first item, bring your attention to the general fund. You will see year-to-date activity plus encumbrances are at 73% of the budget. We are nine months through the year, which is 75%, so we're right on target and should end up actually a little bit lower than that for the total year, so that's a good sign. The second item I want to bring your attention to is on page 146. You will see total general fund revenue. The two columns I want to bring your attention to are year-to-date for this year compared to year-to-date last year. You'll see it's about $2.5 million lower. That is because the change in the instructional support levy. We only asked for $2 million this year, and last year's amount was $7 million for the, I'm sorry, for the cash reserve levy. Let me clarify that. It's the cash reserve levy difference. So you can see that $5 million difference makes up most of that change, or that difference. Any questions on that?
Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. And you're going to review the general fund projections.
In your handout is a chart showing the three kind of key financial projectors that are the indicators that we use to measure our economic, or where we sit financially, the stability. If you look, you'll see we use cash basis for one, fund balance basis for another, and then the authorized budget is the third. You will see for, we are projecting revenues this year at about $111 million for the total year. Expenditures, even though we have a budget of $119 million, we're looking realistically, that'll be closer to $116 million actually spent. So how does that affect our year? You see, it's increase and decrease in the cash balance of about $4.8 million, and that's tied also to the fund balance. They're relatively close in measurement. You see about a $5.6 million decrease, however, in our unspent balance. So that's taking it down to the amounts we're projecting for the end of the year of cash of being $30,794,000. And if you remember earlier, we talked about not having a cash reserve levy rate, because we want to have three months of expenditures, and that amount is $29 million based on the current budget. So we exceed that, that's why there's no cash reserve levy this year. Fund balance, we want to try to have a solvency ratio of 5 to 10%. And based on the current fund balance year-end projection, we're actually at 20.8%. Again, another good indication of our financial stability. The unspent balance, however, with that decline is right at our expectation or our hope for our target amount. You can see we're expecting to be about $9.9 million at the end of the year. We would like to have $9.6 million. So we're right on target with our unspent balance is where we would like to be. Now, let's take a look at the unspent balance and compare that to what it has been. You can see, this is the chart in your handout that shows the history of the unspent balance. The blue line is the actual unspent balance at the end of each year. You can see the 9.9 is where we're hoping to project to be at the end of this year. You can see the decline in unspent balance for the fiscal year FY 13-14. Our target again is in this orange-colored line, solid line, of one month of expenditures. The orange-colored range is really what state experts say that's what we should be at for a UEN district, which represents about $500 to $1,000 per pupil. So that's the range that they use for a marker. The decline is due, a couple things, the past history of 0% and 2% allowable growth that has decreased our ability to, has lessened the ability for us to increase our unspent balance. We've had to spend the dollars based on those 0% and 2% increases. This is using a 3% factor for increase in costs over the past year. So you can see we will have to work towards reducing that decline for the next fiscal year.
Kevin, is that based on 3% allowable growth, too? Is that what I see there?
No, no. It's just based on 3% expenditures, but 0% allowable growth for budget authority.
And that's, Tammy, that's where your comment earlier comes in. We've talked about the tax rate, we've talked about our need to raise money, isn't there? Quite honestly, we need to have the authority to spend those dollars, and that's why 4% allowable growth for us for next year is important. allowable growth for us for next year is imperative. 0%, 2% has been tough. The economy was, there's some reason to understand why the unspent balance, or I'm sorry, the allowable growth was that low. Currently, that need doesn't exist at the state level, so 4% allowable growth changes that trajectory significantly. We still have work to do within that to flatten it off. Obviously, we don't want to keep looking at a roller coaster. We'd like to see a nice smooth line, but there are so many things outside of our control like allowable growth that makes that difficult. But that's where the 4% for next year is vital to us. We're fortunate, we started with $15.5 million. Many districts didn't. So we can ride that wave or have ridden that wave for a year or two. Other districts are looking at reducing staff significantly this year because they didn't, they weren't in such a strong position to start this 0%, 2% allowable growth.
And if you remember, that large increase was due to the hard decisions we had to make, you know, several years ago and cut the budget by $5 million. So we did that, it grew, but without that change or that increase in allowable growth, it's very difficult to spend what our authorized budget allows us to spend. It's hard to match our current year's expenditures to what the authorized budget calculation is for the year.
Our health insurance increases alone, all, you know, fuel for the buses, turning the lights on, all those things go up. We need the spending authority to keep pace with that. And again, during the times in the past where the economy was such that 0% was deemed appropriate at the state level, I understand that, but that's not the current fiscal position of the state. And so 4% is, if you are inclined to advocate for a percent, 4% would be very helpful.
Well, it's just frustrating that our budget has to be turned in and certified and we need to have the state, whatever decision they're going to make, make the decision and let us know how we're going to do it. The fact that they're going to wait and possibly not even get anything done leaves our school district, every school district in the state, just hanging and not knowing what to do. And it'll be at 0% unless they make a decision and that's the worst case scenario and we can't, we can't do business. Nobody can do business this way, so.
I remember that decision was actually supposed to be made for FY 13-14 last year.
It's an Iowa law, but who holds the lawmakers accountable for the law?
So in the meantime, you have employees that we're going into contract negotiations with who are forced to feel undervalued because we can't make a fair offer for contract negotiations. So you have to play it conservatively so we don't run ourselves into the ground and we give the impression to our most valuable asset that we don't value their time and their work efforts, which the whole thing is just broken. It's very, very frustrating.
It is broken and they seem to say it's broken on our end, but I think it's more broken on the legislature's end. So I know I've contacted as many as I can contact and I know many of fellow board members have as well and now it's, the plea is out there to the public to contact them and say they need to make a decision, they need to move on this so we can do business.
Kevin and I have to, the district level, we have to assume worst-case scenario.
We do.
We have to fight for the worst and hope for the best kind of a scenario. So when we don't know anything other than zero, we have to build a budget, we have to make plans based on the fact that it will be zero.
It's projecting very difficult.
Absolutely.
So, just so I understand this, the state law says, requires the legislature and the governor to set an allowable growth rate April for the upcoming year. So that was last year they were supposed to set this allowable growth rate. And they didn't set it last year and we went through three-quarters of this legislative session without them addressing the topic of what the allowable growth rate is. It's just very frustrating. I mean, I guess, I guess that's what, I'll leave it, it's very frustrating.
It is. It's difficult to do planning and negotiating since the staff.
For us to have quality programming, for us to, I mean, we should, any large business is planning a year, year and a half in advance at least. And for us to not even know, starting July 1st, we're only three months away from what we can plan. We have to build a budget based on zero. And April 15th is next week.
Yeah. Well, let's hope. I know they're going into committee again tomorrow to hash this out, I read, so let's hope.
The problem starts with the fact that we send our money to them.
Right.
And then they're kind enough to give some of it back to us.
Correct.
There's problem numero uno right there. Let's start with that.
All right.
Well, and I would like to say that they had that cracker barrel this Saturday, or this last Saturday, and they discussed that and Senator Bowman, who's on that, who's chair on that committee, the education committee, and he's well aware of the fact. In fact, I had, I was able to talk with him as he was heading out of the parking lot and he, first of all, his first question is, well, how many people three years ago did you, did you lay off? And I told him, he was just flabbergasted, is really. And so he's well aware of that fact. And so we're doing everything we can from the board side to let legislators know what's going on. But, and I think that we do have an advocate with Senator Bowman, basically since he's a school teacher in the MacOquita system, so he understands what.
All of our local representation is well-informed, well-versed in doing what they can, but there's a tug-of-war going on and so.
Well, and the changes that they want to do are good changes. It's just, let's come to a happy ground and just make a decision. Just figure out, if anything, if they can't make a decision, give us something to work with for next year and then hash out their problems.
We had the same conversation a month ago and we're not any further along.
All we can do is keep pleading. It's been for a couple of years now.
It's ridiculous.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Although it is very cathartic to sit here and complain. So I do feel better than I did five minutes ago.
Well, good. Good. No more complaining. Let's move on to happier things. Do you want to talk about anything from ed programs?
Do we have to approve that or did we already do that?
It was under consent agenda, there's.
No, 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 I'm talking about.
No, that was just information only.
Okay, I'm sorry. I mean, we had an educational program meeting, but it was after our lengthy technology meeting, so we just, we got a little bit of an update from the district special education teacher on seclusion restraint and how it's been used. And, you know, it's an interesting subject. We're looking into it more for crisis prevention, training, CPI, and bringing some other programming into the, into the schools. Because again, I think what's become apparent is we're not using it correctly across the, across the system and we're going to try and figure out if we can, you know, put, put better procedures in place. Other than that, went through, reviewed some policies, only made the one change to the Clark, from Clark College to Clark University on B, thanks to Mike's eyes.
All right. Okay, moving on to review the technology plan. Are you wanting to?
I am. Mike, I'm kind of trying to contact Mike, he's ignoring me. Is it possible for us to project this, Mike, for those in the audience, using the, using the Elmo?
Elmo? The Elmo?
That's what they're called.
Yeah, it's called Elmo. I don't know why, I'm sure that's a.
Tickle.
This'll take us just a second to set this up.
Give us a few minutes. Let's complain a little more about the budget.
Well, I thought I could tell you what times the games start.
I've got that too. I've got that.
The boys' sophomore soccer game's at 4:00 PM. The girls' varsity is at 6:15 and the boys' varsity is at 8:00 PM.
And then the girls', girls' sophomore plays over at Hempstead, I believe, at 4 o'clock.
Boys' sophomore time at 4.
4 o'clock is boys' sophomore.
At Dalzell, yeah. Girls' is at 4 o'clock at Hempstead Field. Girls' varsity is at 6:15. Boys' varsity is at 8 o'clock. Hempstead versus senior, so what a great way to open up.
Girls' varsity at 6:15.
6:15, yep.
And then 8 o'clock is boys' varsity.
Yep.
Thank you.
I just thought they could.
Everybody can join in on the fun.
The first games at 4?
That's four.
Perfect.
4 o'clock.
And what kind of track meet is that on the next day? Is that a conference or?
Yep. I initially intended to just do this as a handout, but we've got significantly more people in the audience than we generally have for a board meeting, so I thought we would maybe project this really quickly. As you know, from committee meetings, conversations that we've had, that we really want to bring to the board as part of our strategic plan, an integration of technology in order to meet our, our goals of ensuring that all of our students are college and career-ready in the 21st century. One of the things that we think we need to do to put the right tools in the hands of our staff is to, is to up our game with, with technology, to give our students and our staff more opportunity to experience technology for educational purposes, for problem-solving, for creative thinking, for communication, for all of the ways they're going to have to use technology in their lives, whether they go to college, whether they go right into the workforce, whether they go into the military. Everybody is relying heavily on, on technology. So just to give you sort of a brief overview timeline-wise, what it is we're asking for a commitment of from, from the one cent sales tax, which you'll notice, I guess to preface, to start off, we talked a little bit about, the district is behind the game to some degree with our student access to technology in part because until a year and a half, two years ago, we couldn't use one cent sales tax dollars for technology. That law was changed about two years ago, I think it's two years ago this August. And so we've formulated a plan on, now that some of the infrastructure, the backend work has been done, is how do we put technology in the hands of our staff first and then our students? How do we provide professional development and make sure that our, our teachers are comfortable with the technology before they start using it in the classroom, but at the same time providing those opportunities? So this is sort of our, the first four years of the plan, we're asking that we expend $3.5 million per year for the first four years, that we would upgrade all of our computer labs using a virtual, I can slide into that, a virtual desktop, is that getting? Technology which makes it extremely cost-effective to do that. So taking the labs that currently exist and adding to that, adding a lab at every house at the middle school level and a lab at every department at the high school level. So that immediately by next fall increases the access to technology by having more labs, but also increases the access to current technology. These labs will be based on the most recent version of Windows, but it's done through virtual desktop and I won't try to explain that, maybe Ron can at a later meeting, but it basically, it capitalizes on the computing power. Basically, a student will have in front of them a monitor, a mouse, and a keyboard and it takes the tower out of the scenario, but it doesn't degrade the, the experience. So that's where we're going to start. We're also going to increase at the secondary level, the use of mobile technology. What we eventually want to get to is the technology that is flexible, versatile, but also mobile, that students can use those, teachers can use those where they're most effective. So we're updating the labs first because that's cost-effective and then we're jumping right into an increase in tablets. People are familiar with all variety of tablets. We'll use a Windows-based tablet. We have 22 teachers this year who are going through, is it 22, professional development on how to incorporate this technology into this classroom. Next year, another cohort will go through that technology, the following year, another cohort. As they complete the training, we will give them access to a mobile cart with tablets on it, 25 to 30 tablets on the cart depending upon that, on that need, focusing first on the high school and middle school. Those are the students who we need to get that technology in their hands as, as quickly as we can, quite honestly, because they're closer to graduation. So the vision is that at the middle school level, there is a tablet in every, a cart, a mobile cart with tablets in every house. So now every house has a lab and a mobile cart with tablets. So six teachers sharing two opportunities to use classroom-sized technology. The remaining carts will go to the high school, teachers again going through that training and so we'll increase it depending upon how many carts we're ultimately able to, to afford and put in their classroom. So every department will have a lab, will start to introduce carts in year one, in year two, will significantly increase those carts. Almost all of those will go, it says middle school and high school, but almost all will go to the high school because the middle schools will have those, one per, one per house already. So you'll see 1,200 tablets, 1,200 tablets. And then in the third year, we will refresh the teacher laptops, which if you'll remember, we purchased 850 teacher laptops two years ago, so they'll be four and a half years old when we replace those, which is about the life expectancy of a, of a laptop. And we will add tablets at the elementary level. We will add one tablet cart per grade level. So the fifth grade team at Kennedy will share a cart of 30, a second grade team at Fulton will share a cart. And so the principals will, will work with sort of how to implement some of that. But again, those teachers will be provided the professional development so that they can effectively utilize that technology. And then the ultimate goal for us would be 16, 17, to go to a one-to-one computing scenario at the high school level. So across the bottom here, you'll also notice that we are increasing things like interactive projectors. If you're familiar with what a smart board does, interactive projector is the same type, it's the, it's the most recent version of that technology so that the short throw projector projects on a flat surface and you can manipulate that the same way that you can a smart board. If you remember from the elections, some of the, some of the newscasters were using some of that stuff and moving that around. So that's what we envision having available in our classrooms at the, at the, at all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. Again, there's going to be, not probably every classroom, we will want to provide the professional development so the teacher has not only the desire, but the, the training to be able to use that effectively. So across time, in those four years, we would like to get to a scenario where at the high school level, it's one-to-one. Kids have technology in their hands every day. Middle school level, frequent use of technology. Six teachers utilizing a lab or a cart, that's a pretty, a pretty significant increase from where they're at today. And then at the elementary level, a little less technology because much of what they teach, you know, grounded in the basics, technology is probably not as imperative. So we, we immerse them more and more as they progress through the system. The time they reach graduation, they have a good grasp on the use of technology for problem-solving, communicating, all those 21st century skills that we wrapped into our strategic plan. And then the $2.5 million and across the bottom is vital because we'll need to refresh this equipment. I mean, it really has become the cost of doing business. The day of purchasing technology, I mean, that's what the, the history has been of most school districts. Much of the technology we have today is 10, 12 years old because we had the money to purchase it at one point, but there was no plan to refresh that technology. So that $2.5 million is a refresh cycle so that as tablets, as projectors, as things age out, we'll have the resources available to upgrade or replace, refresh those, that technology. So we're very excited about this plan and be happy to answer any questions.
I haven't received a single phone call with anybody complaining about anything other than that this is great. I've heard people make comments like it's been an inclusive process, that Ron knows what he's doing, he's got his arms around it. People in the trenches, the handful of people I've spoken with feel very, very confident in the leadership behind this initiative, which is, that's great.
One of the things I guess I want to be really clear about, and I don't remember if I mentioned it upfront, is occasionally you'll hear people talk about, well, are you going to use technology to replace teachers? Absolutely not. Education, the learning process is about relationship. We need expert teachers, we've got some, some excellent teachers, but when we can take those expert teachers and we can put this tool in their hand and put those two things together, then, then we blow the roof off of it. I mean, really have the, there's no limit to the potential. So I don't ever want somebody to see this and say, well, you know, you're replacing teachers with technology. Absolutely not. We want excellent teachers who develop relationships with their students, who have access to technology so that the students can learn in a 21st century environment.
One of the things we talked about too at the committee meeting was that, you know, if this just becomes a way to read a book or turn in your homework, flawed system. You know, we got to make sure that, I had mentioned, I recently took a class at a community college and it was, you know, our smart board was used as an overhead projector and we did our, you know, our fancy computer program to turn in our papers. We did nothing different than you would have, you would have done. So it's really incumbent upon, you know, and one of the things, you know, we talked about was that kind of stepping up, starting with the high schools, starting, you know, making sure that what is it, 22 teachers go through, learn how to do it, they share their lessons with each other and, and the. their lessons with each other, and the professional development is as much top, bottom-up as it is top-down, and we really want to make sure that, you know, we take advantage of this resource rather than just have a fancy board in every classroom.
Absolutely. The temptation is to go out and purchase all of, we could condense this into one year instead of four years, we'd, you know, have to forego some other projects, but the reality is that's not what we need to do. We need to bring this on a step at a time, we need to build sort of a critical mass with our teachers, provide the professional development, provide the experience for the students. I mean, I hope that there are teachers who aren't able to go through this training next year or the following year just because the numbers are so large and they're demanding, where is my technology? That's a good sign that we're doing it the right way and creating that momentum that will carry us forward. If we roll in and hand every student a device next year or went faster than this, I believe we would end up with at least some scenarios, like you're talking about, where they say, fine, I'll use this the same way I used to use a whiteboard, which I replaced from my chalkboard, which I went back from, so, well, okay.
But, you know, again, I also reminded of a conversation we had at one of those sessions with Tammy Dear and her group sitting around a table at that brainstorming summit. But, really, you know, the bottom-up best practices where we can figure out who's doing something great at Fulton, who's doing something great at Eisenhower, and, you know, pass, use technology, utilize technology to pass, you know, what's happening great around the district, I think will make us so much better.
And at some point, we can probably have Lynn or David do a conversation about how the professional development really has changed, especially with the technology. It's not about bringing them to the forum and showing them what's the latest application or that sort of thing, but it really is more job embedded, it's in the classroom, it's going in and observing what's this teacher doing versus that teacher, how do we share that information, how do we move together as educators? And so, that's exactly the model that we're aiming at.
One, I think it'll make us great, but it'll also give the teachers the sense of empowerment, and they'll feel good about themselves and make a difference, and I think the whole process gets much better fast.
Well, I know this is a lot of money to be spent that comes out of our one cent sales tax, which would go towards buildings, but as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't matter how pretty the building is, if you don't have the technology that our kids need to have to learn, it's not going to make a difference. And this needs to be a part of that plan as we, you know, talk about the facilities, and it does cut into that budget a little bit, but this is imperative, and it, I'd like to see how it's, I know you've gone through and talked about the refresh cycle, so we're not stuck where we are right now with computers that are ancient.
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree. I think it's going to be a fine line, and it's a mix that we're going to have to work on, how much do we spend on facilities versus technology? But, I think this is a great start, and, you know, we're looking four or five years out, things may change in year three or year four or year five, I mean, the further out it goes, the more flexible it will need to be. Technology will change, and we're talking about tablets here, but by 16, 17, I don't know what the technology will be that provides that resource. So, you know, it's really solid in 13, 14, in my opinion, 15, 16, or 14, 15, you know, 15, 16, 16, 17, it gets a little grayer because that technology changes every six months, and so to build a plan that's built on four or five years. The most important piece is the commitment to the resources, and then making sure that we're using those resources wisely.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions? All right. You want to just, probably will stay up there with the next one, won't you?
I guess I probably could.
Can you talk, review the strategic plan goals that we asked to have updated for specifics?
I'm on a basketball game.
I'll talk then.
Business before pleasure.
I didn't bring any carrots.
Okay. And this one's probably going to struggle to fit on here, but at a previous meeting, we talked about the update to the strategic plan, and before we dive into this one, I want to make a couple of comments. And so, we were asked, you know, get out of the weeds a little bit, make a little bit more big picture, give us a measurable in each of these areas. And so, that's what we did, that we tried to cut it down to, you know, five or six, that wasn't really possible, so I think what you'll find here are 16 or 17 measurables aligned to the goals and aligned to the assessments to each of those goals. Also, what you'll find on here are many areas where it says, we're creating that data right now. And I think that's a good sign that we're not just doing what we've always done. Some things we've measured forever, student achievement, we've measured that forever. So, we have some solid numbers to give you. Some things, like our student development on the second page, that's new for us to measure. So, we're in the process of measuring that this year and coming back after we've had a chance to measure that. So, let me, see if I can zoom in here so it's readable, maybe it's readable to you, but truly not to me. So, to lay standard, our third graders, sixth graders, and 11th grader proficient in reading and math. So, what we did is we took the Iowa test scores, third grade, sixth grade, 11th grade, reading, math, we didn't, that's changed, so there's not, we wanted to give you historical perspective, so we wanted to give you the 10, 11 perspective in each of these areas, then the 12 or 13, and then give you a goal for 15 or 16. So, there's a little bit of history there, but some perspective of where we're at. So, I don't need to go through each of those areas specifically, I certainly will answer questions, but, so, each one fits on that page, or one page for each goal area. One of the things you'll see across the bottom is increase the number of students who meet the college readiness standard in all four content areas, we're going to increase that by 1% a year. That is a significant step, those numbers look small, but that's where we're starting from. And then the graduation rate, that's defined by the state, we don't know what our graduation rate was for the 12, 13 school year yet, but we'll have that information shortly. And then, the goal is by state mandate, 100% by 15, 16. So, that's why you see 100% of that goal. That is the goal that the state has set as part of the No Child Left Behind, so, if you have questions, feel free to. So, I spoke a little bit about student development. Again, a lot of these, can you read that if I go further out? Can you? So, a lot of these, you're going to see that that data was not tracked historically. I need one of those technology classes I was talking about. And so, what are we doing if we haven't tracked it? So, we're developing that data this year, okay? A lot of that data will be available this spring, we'll establish a goal, and we'll fill in that goal for the 15, 16 school year this summer at a board meeting when we have a year's worth of measurement for that. You know, one of the things we talked about is the co-curricular extracurricular activities. We're collecting that data right now, but obviously, we've got to get through the spring, get through track, get through soccer, those activities that take place in the spring, so we can say what percent of our students are involved in some co-curricular activity, and then build some goals from there.
And you're counting clubs and?
Clubs, everything, yep.
Anything that's beyond the regular school.
We're building a system that will tell us who is involved with something at school other than going to class.
Right.
And from that, we'll figure out what the percent is, we will choose a progression till we get to the point where we've got all of our students involved in something, and from that, we'll also do some surveying to say, what is it that'll keep you here or get you here early? And we understand, we can't, for some kids, the traditional activities work great, for some kids, they don't, it's just not a match with who they are, what their interest is. You know, we're spending a lot of money on technology, how can we use some of that technology? An awful lot of kids like technology, so, some technology clubs and those sorts of things.
Stan, we're not, I don't see a number here until three years from now, an accountability number, if you will. That, to me, seems like an eternity, and it's a little disappointing. I'd like to know, I mean, I see where we're headed, a 15, 16 number, what about 13, 14?
Well, we had that conversation, you know, to talk about, we can, pardon?
I mean, we talked about those numbers, we have those numbers.
Yeah, we have those numbers. We thought we would, you know, do it in, we track those numbers all the time, and so we can add those numbers to this form, we can put as many columns in there as you're comfortable with. So, if you'd like to see a year-by-year progression, that's easy to do. We were looking at, so what are, sort of significant steps forward, knowing that year by year, they'll be smaller, those will be smaller percentages.
So, we have set specific measurable deadline goals for 2013, 2014.
In the areas in which we have that data available. So, for a lot of these things, like I said, this is new, we haven't tracked this before, so it's taking, we're going to have to collect that data. Number one, we're going to have to figure out a process which, I mean, to talk in the present tense because we've figured that out, in some areas and others we're still working on it, so that it is meaningful and accurate data. We could pull, you've sat through the meetings where we have lots of, lots of numbers. So, we want to make sure these are numbers that really mean something and really impact kids and their education, whether it be around achievement, or participation, or community involvement. So, that's the, that's the reason for some of this, is we need to get a year of experience, we passed this in November, and so, you know, to take this year as our baseline in the areas where we've never tracked that data before seems to make sense. We need a full school year of experience to know, you know, how many kids are participating, what is the, you know, the achievement data tends to come out way too far after the fact from the state level. So, we're using this year to set that baseline, and if you want us to put, you know, fill in those in-between years, we can certainly do that, but we also wanted to look at systematic change over time, so that's why there's a couple-year gap in there. But, we have that data in the areas in which we collect the data currently. Now, some of these areas, like I'm pointing out, we're just learning, we're just beginning to collect that data. Are there questions? Community engagement, very little data has been collected historically. One piece is, that we believe is vital, is parent-teacher conferences, so that's where you see, three years ago, we were at 78%, now we've diminished to 75%. Our goal is to get back to 78% and keep climbing from there. The reason those numbers have diminished, we've done a lot of that to ourselves. Power school, when grades are available to a parent on a regular basis, so we've seen a dip in attendance based on power school because people say, I don't need to come anymore because I'm up to date, or email, some teachers are very effective at keeping parents up to date using email or that type of information.
So, that measure to me, as far as measuring, I would be under the 25% of non-engaged parent because I.
So, what do we have to do to get you there?
Why do I need to go there if I'm in contact with my child's teacher through email, I'm in contact with my child's information through power school, and the process is a pain-killing, all-night event at the high school level and the middle school level? So, for me to be, I mean, I think the measurement should be, if you're in, if that teacher can measure you're in contact with the parent, that should be, why is it just on parent-teacher conferences, is what I'm saying? Because I think the process is painful to a lot of parents, that I know a lot of parents, they get to the point where they're like, I'm not going anymore. I know where my kid is doing, I've talked to the teachers, and if you're only measuring on this, I don't think we're measuring correctly.
Well, and we'll learn some of those lessons as we go, I think those are all good points. It's about engagement, how do we make, how do we decide if a parent's engaged in their son or daughter's education? Parent-teacher conference is one way, but you're right, it certainly isn't the only way.
Right, and it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Because, like I said, I would be 25% of a non-engaged parent, and you know I'm not that.
You can work on it.
And we're trying to keep, you know, again, we're trying to learn, we're trying to keep these goals, you know, I felt kind of, all right, we're coming in with, I don't know if the number is 16, and we really were looking to get to six or eight, well, 16 is one per, so, some of these things will probably have to change over time as we move forward.
That's fair.
Effective resource management, you know, that's basically what we just reported out tonight. Talking about solvency ratio, unspent balance, and then technology available for students, if you remember those goals, those are the primary pieces that we have in there. So, where are we at with our solvency ratio? You'll see where our goals are, our unspent balance. Those are easy numbers because we've tracked those over time, and we know what healthy is. There are some standards in the accounting profession to tell us, this is where you should be. And then the technology across the bottom, again, you'll see a consistent upswing in access to technology, and that's just in reference to the plan I presented earlier. So, all of these things have plans behind them, like the technology plan, but this is the snapshot that you can, I mean, pull out and look at, you know, how are we doing with technology there, or whatever the issue is.
Well, I thank you for coming up with these ways of measuring. I think it's difficult because we haven't asked, you know, for this kind of stuff.
That's what we're finding to be difficult, and it may seem like it's going slow, but the reality is it's going extremely fast. I mean, again, remember, this was approved plan in November, and it's, is it April? It's April, you know, so to start to define how we're going to measure, start to pull that data, to realize we're asking for that data often from the same people over and over and over again, teachers and other people, so not wanting to ask them for every piece of data immediately to stagger that in a way that doesn't bury them with that, with that information. One of the things we talked a lot about today is recruitment and retention, and how will we measure retention? And that's something that, you know, you won't find on here yet, but it's something we're continuing to talk about, because we don't want to retain 100% of our teachers, quite honestly. You know, there's a certain, there's a certain ratio of teachers, well, we're going to make the wrong decision and hire the wrong person, and after a short period of time, we need to rethink that decision and move forward with that. So, it's not as simple as saying we want 100% retention, or we, what does that really mean, and how do we quantify and track retention that is good for students? All of these things should, when measured, should improve what you saw on the first page in that student achievement.
I think it's a continuous improvement process.
Absolutely.
It's going to have to grow, and I, I think the point you made about retention is the same point Tammy made about the conferences. There's, of the 22% of the people that don't go, maybe there's 11% that are engaged and happy and have meaningful relationships and that have, and that don't need to participate, don't feel they need to participate in the conference because they're doing so many other things, and there's some percentage, so, the same with retention. Just because we're not retaining all of our employees doesn't mean that's necessarily sometimes a bad thing. So, I guess the goal is to reach the goals in the strategic plan, it's, hopefully, we can get to the point where we have some meaningful targets and things that we're focusing on to get to that goal, and it's going to, I, it's going to take some time for this to get to something that we all can be very excited about.
Absolutely. And I guess I just would want the board to know, we do spend a great deal of time going through this, trying to figure out exactly what that is. It's usually not our first thought, well, retention, let's figure out how many teachers, you know, let's look at cohorts and three years in, and five years in, and 10 years in, but then you stop and you think, well, we shouldn't have 100% after five years because we've not been that perfect at hiring, that everybody we hire, we want to still have here in five years. And so, what are the right goals for those? So, we, it is an evolving situation, we'll continue to improve it.
And I think we recognize that, and I also think that what we're asking for the measurement, I know I don't want it to be the same thing you've always measured and the same thing being regurgitated, you know, that has always been done, because that makes, that makes the job, not that I want to make your job more difficult, but that's not where you're going to get the change.
That's right. It's not going to stretch, or, you're right. And that's why, in some of those, where you say it's not available yet, because we're trying to develop in some of those areas that we're focusing on, you know, more quantitatively than we have in the past.
And Lynn, you could probably refresh, but at that one, I think it was two ed programs meetings ago, you had that comparative analysis research thing where it was, if, like, a kid is underperforming in the second grade, they're supposed to get 22 points better, and I think, you know, that kind of, if we could build some of that kind of analysis, if you, you were there, if you remember what I was talking about, I think that would be really good, where we could put real numbers and.
One of the things, the changes that we looked at with Iowa testing, and we're used to growing up without ourselves and looking at percent times, and that is important information, it compares your student to other students in the district, or the nation, or the state. It compares your student to other students in the district, or the nation, or the state. But we've also started with the re-norming, which you notice on that first page, data not comparable. The test was re-normed in 2011, so you can't go back more than two years right now. And we looked at the issue of, let's just not talk about kids as they compare to each other, let's talk about how every single kid in this district grows, and how much do they grow? So we can really celebrate the fact that our children who are in special education, and I'm doing this from memory, so please forgive me, but in third grade, 67% of our kids in special education grow more than what is statistically expected that they should. That's a celebration. That's a celebration for our teachers, it's a celebration for those students and their families. And likewise, as we looked at various points across, are we getting the growth for every single kid? Not, oh, I made the 41st percentile for No Child Left Behind, or my kid's over the 90th percentile. It doesn't matter, did they grow?
Right.
So looking at that differently is an area that we've really investigated with our instructional coaches.
And I guess from my perspective, and again, I know this is really hard, but I think if there was a way to quantify any of that in here, and again, easier said than done, I get it. But I think that, to me, I thought those were really sort of inspiring stats. And as a parent, I would say, you know, again, if, you know, I have kids, one who's a super-duper student and one who's pretty good. And, you know, again, if my super-duper student is supposed to improve by 30 points and improves by 28, you know, I probably shouldn't take him out for ice cream, whereas, you know, so I think, I think that's, I, to me, I found that data very useful. And I, again, I don't know if it's easy to put in here, but if it was, I think that would be pretty neat.
Well, there's another way to look at this, too, that's not necessarily data-related, but when I saw, and we're familiar on the board with the work that we're doing with dropout prevention. Is that Tom Kirchner, is that the fellow Ed? When you pick up the paper and read, you know, I mean, he's out there beating the pavements, trying to get these kids engaged, and you say, well, we're doing this, we're doing this program, we're doing this program, we're doing this program. I mean, somebody's got to work pretty hard to, they really got to want to get out to drop out, if we're going to let them drop out. And that makes me, I mean, and that may not show up in a graduation rate, or say any kind of formalized statistic, but knowing that we have solid programs in place like that program for dropout prevention, makes me feel very good about the Waukegan Community School District. And there's a lot of programs that are like that, that maybe not ideal to quantify in a 75% to 80% number, but I feel good that they're out there, and I feel comfortable with the people, I feel great that the people doing that are doing such a great job, and that makes me feel like we've got a great school. Those kind of stories make me feel like we have a great school district. So as you think about how to quantify and achieve these goals in the strategic plan, I would ask you to think about telling stories like the story that was told in the paper on Sunday with Tom and how he's addressing dropout prevention.
You know what, to that point, and we talked about this a lot a long time ago, but I would also say, you know, try and figure out which programs aren't producing the results we like, get rid of them.
Definitely. I think we've, and I know that you're working on that.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
No. Sorry, Stan.
Thanks, Stan.
That's good stuff.
Okay. We need to go through the motions under new business.
I moved that the Board of Education receive and file letter from Wasker, Dorr, Wimmer, and McCoolier.
Sounds good.
PC, and authorize the board president to respond, indicating the request is an impermissible expenditure of public funds.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file letter from Wasker, Dorr, Wimmer, and McCoolier, PC, and authorize the board president to respond, indicating the request is an impermissible expenditure of public funds. Is there any discussion? Do you want to, do we need to give any further discussion?
Well...
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one?
I moved that the Board of Education excuse seniors for making up four snow days in June.
Bunch of kids will be happy about this one.
We're not going to get a lot of hate mail on this one, are we?
I moved that everybody except for George's daughter.
I think I'm going to, I've had this conversation already. I'm going to abstain from this. Personal law.
It's been moved...
I would like to say something.
Second, let me get to discussion. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education excuse seniors for making up four snow days in June. Discussion?
Well, I would like to make a brief, brief comment here. And I'm going to vote yes on this with some reservations. You know, I know that a no vote by one member won't mean anything. This is another reason why our graduation date needs to be changed for Memorial Day weekend, because it falls early this year. Not only are we approving four days of education that can be missed because of snow days, but do you know that the seniors also miss another two days of instructional time because grades have to be in two days before their last day of school, so that this district is ready for graduation on Memorial Day? Two days that the seniors will just sit around because grades have already been turned in. So folks, you know, that's, that's six days of instructional time that we have not only cheated our seniors out of, but that is six days of paid education that the taxpayers, and I'm included in on that, have our tax dollars wasted on non-education days for our seniors. So now, I'm pointing this out because something needs to be done to our calendar for 2015. I'm getting tired of not having the flexibility to give the kind of education I, as a taxpayer, along with the people I represent, expect from America's best small-town school district. Well, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, I think we've had, this is a problem that's gone on for a number of years, and if we're going to graduate the seniors before the end of the year, I don't see how we get around from not making, having to make up the snow days.
Well, I mean, we can't do that unless we... Whether it's, whether it's Memorial or any other weekend, unless it's a date after, you know, later, later in the, in the spring or summer.
Unless our graduation is after the end of the formal school year.
There's really no way around that. There's also, that's also true about the two days, there is a two-day window by which, you know, seniors take finals, they do all those things, and the teachers need to, and this, and this is true in every school district I've ever been associated with, where the teachers need that time to grade the finals, to grade the research papers, whatever it is, and so that we can figure out who actually graduated. I mean, we need to get those grades in the, in the system. So really, the only way, the choice really is to, if you're going to have a graduation date, Memorial Day or other, that's during the normal school year, you're going to have that. The only way to avoid that is to push graduation...
Way back.
Beyond, yeah, the normal school year. So I guess you'd be looking at June, I don't know what the Sunday would be, the seventh or the eighth, or something in that ballpark this year.
Yeah. Yeah. Unfortunately, the snow days in Iowa limit, I mean, the weather in Iowa kind of ties our hand to certain things. But the graduation date, that's our own decision-making, as far as, as far as that goes.
Two things the citizens keep saying loud and clear, they really like Memorial Day weekend for graduation, number one. We hear that a lot. Number two, they love the fact that we have a spring break.
We haven't checked on the graduation lately. I mean...
As part of our community, you know, conversation, as well, things in the strategic plan, we certainly can, we have the capability now of checking that, rechecking that.
One of the things I heard, I think, Tom, it was you said that district got in a bunch of hot water a few years back when they changed it. And I think, you know, you could argue, was it Memorial Day, or was it changing it?
No, it was they changed it after it was set.
No, that's my, but that's, no, that's my point. Is it, is it, is it really Memorial Day, or were they mad because you changed?
Well, there are very few districts that have it on Memorial, I mean, they float it. It's not always on the exact same Memorial Day weekend. It's floated on a different date, which makes your calendar structure a lot more flexible. So that's what we're looking at. Not necessarily, it's how we structure the entire calendar, not just because of graduation. It's how it affects when we start the semester. For, a lot of people talk, too, that they want to have the semester end at Christmas. Well, that effect, that also means you have to change graduation date. So, you know, I think, to just say, do we want to change graduation, is not a fair question. It's, here's what it all, here's, if we change graduation, here's what else can be changed. And if we don't, here's what cannot, so...
Absolutely. Changing that one factor makes things much more flexible, but it's to the point of, we'll have to do some communications with our stakeholders to find out, you know, of what value is that. And it's certainly been that way for, for a long time, but certainly, we have the capability of actively seeking out responses to that. One of the things that we sometimes struggle with is that we give people an opportunity to, to send an email in. Well, you tend to hear from the people who dislike something, so how can we actively poll to have more accurate data about what the average stakeholder in the community feels is?
Well, a decision like this has to be made a whole year in advance for graduation, so...
That's right.
There's nothing, and nobody has to worry for the next calendar year, so...
Calendar set for next year, but next fall would be the time to try to determine that, because it's by December that we'll have built the calendar for the following year.
Which means we need to start gathering data now.
That's right.
And I think we're all open to hearing what that data says, or what those, what that says, so...
To keep our seniors from worrying that they're not, it has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education excuse seniors from making up four snow days in June. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries.
I did enjoy Otto's speech. I did.
Last piece of, I need a motion.
I moved that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action for student number 802105 at this time.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action for student number 802105 at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Okay. Any other board member or administrative issues that are not on the agenda? Nobody? Nobody has anything? Anybody down front? All right. Upcoming board meeting is on May 13th. And anything else, anybody? Last chance? All right, we are adjourned.